Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of Peter's Councilmember for Monday, December 12th, 2022. Mr. Lauder will call first.
Ms. Shennefell?
I'm here.
Dr. Baroska?
Here.
Mr. Art Curry?
Here.
Mr. Spiegel?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Okay, our ask for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is going to be a special report. We have with us tonight Representative Mahalek, who comes bearing, I guess, good news regarding a Pennsylvania redevelopment assistance capital program grant that she was able to secure for the township to cover expenses related to upgrades at Peterswood Park Field One and Two.
Welcome.
I never know where to stand here. Now, we come bearing gifts. I just was telling a few of the council members, normally I come with the big check, but I literally couldn't fit it in my car on my way back from Harrisburg last week. Sorry. I apologize for that. No, we're really excited that we were able to pull this one together for the baseball association. And that's because you all, you know, figured out the process. You were able to identify a need with the fields and the dugouts and the lights that are beyond their useful life, and go to the township and work it out so that it was in the budget and it was ready to go. Unlike some of the previous grants that we've been able to advocate for, most recently, I think, probably for the aquatic center where I worked on it for like a couple of years, government works in very strange ways. And this one was sort of on the fly. The governor, in, you know, his last few months in office, wanted to open up the R-Caps and dispense of some of the funds. And if we can bring the funds home, I'm always happy to advocate for that. So I was able to just, you know, quickly place a call into the township and see what was up within the budget and what we could actually, you know, realistically get done. And we were able to pull it off. So I'm happy to have played a small role. These guys are the ones driving the bus. I can just occasionally like grab the wheel and crash it into a grant here and there. So we're really excited for you. It sounds like, you know, within the next two years that this project's going to come to fruition. So obviously, I don't come with the big check, but I came giving a lesson in municipal government. And also, you know, obviously, we want to see the improvements to the fields and the parks and the playgrounds and the township. We've got kids here and we're part of it, too. So I think there's a lot of room for improvement. So I hope that others in your situation with, whether it's basketball or softball or whatever it is, are able to advocate just as successfully as you were in communicating with the township and bringing some of that money back to Peters. Because it's out there and it's going to go somewhere, and why not here? I'm happy to bring it back and play whatever role that I can in so doing. So congratulations to you all. Can't wait to see it when it's all said and done.
Mr. Spiegel?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm sure your kids appreciate it being able to come along with you after all the time you have to...
They were asking a lot of questions, though. But my notice isn't about, she's been here before, so she knows the gist of it.
But she didn't want to sit with them.
They know that you guys are elected, so we're getting a little cross course in municipal government tonight.
If I could, one, as I have told council before, you know, over the years that I've worked here, we've had some state representatives who have represented us well, but nobody has represented us as well as Natalie Mahalek. The other thing that I think is that this time next year, we'll have you on the schedule again, since apparently every year you bring us a check about this time of the year. But the other thing that I wanted to point out to you is, I had an opportunity last week to participate in the University of Pittsburgh Institute of Politics retreat. And that's a gathering of states, county, and local officials. And one of the areas that they were talking about was economic development, and they were talking about the R-Cap program, this grant program that we're receiving this money through. And as I pointed out to you last year, that grant that we received last year is the largest grant the township has ever received. And quite honestly, this is the second largest grant that the township's ever received. But the interesting thing that I did not know about the R-Cap program prior to last week is that the average grant inside of the R-Cap program, and this is the money that the state of Pennsylvania uses for economic development and for projects like this, is less than a million dollars. So when you look at these two grants that Representative Mahalek has been able to acquire for the township, it makes them even more significant in terms of the scale of the commitment the state has made to help us fund these projects. I think probably somebody from the baseball association is probably in a much better position than I am to tell you what this project means to them.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Snyder. I'm president of the Peters Township Baseball Association as probably two months ago. So this is all kind of new to me and fast and wild. And I just want to say like I'm so appreciative of being able to get this kind of money to turf these fields from, you know, the representatives to the council. You know, for years, we played on dirt fields, and when it rains, baseball shut down, you know. And you're having tournaments and you're out to throw them field dry and you're sucking up this dust and, you know, just trying to like play a game in the mud. And to have something like that that can just make a nice field with lights and be able to turf it and be able to play baseball year round is just amazing. And what makes it even more amazing is we have some extremely competitive baseball players coming up. I happen to be also the coach of our 11U travel team that is actually nationally ranked as a township. We're ranked 62nd in the nation, which is quite a feat for a township team. We're playing against the AAU teams with just our kids here in the district. And that means so much to me to be able to know that we're going to play and we're going to practice and be able to do that and compete with some of these other townships, you know? Like, we can compete with them on a baseball field, but we can't compete with our field. And one story that just happened this year that I love to share is that Peters Township, the high school coach was conducting our tryouts. And he hit a ground ball at third base and took a horrible hop, almost took the kid's head off. And he said, "Hey, kid, don't worry. You moved your feet. You have to remember, you're on Peters Township baseball fields. You gotta watch yourself." That's tough to swallow and play, you know? It's like, you have to worry about blocking with your body. Now, we're going to be able to play all the time and bring competitive baseball, you know, to this township because of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And kids, thanks for coming with your mom. You don't realize it now, but she's doing great things here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, what else is included in this? I think we're doing dugouts.
We're going to be doing, replacing the press boxes. Of all the things in any of our parks that need replaced, those press boxes need replaced. We're going to be doing the dugouts. We're going to be relighting the field. We think there's adequate money to do a turfed infield on the Little League field. We're going to look at the possibility of being able to do the same on the Field One. I'm just not sure whether that, whether the money's, there's enough money there to go to get that accomplished as well. But one thing about the baseball association is they've been a good partner with us. They invest in township facilities, and we're going to, we're going to be working with them, both on the design as well as the execution of the contract.
And part of also the possibilities of doing that is getting with the PW2 and possibly the PW1 is I've also reached out to the Pony League World Series. Pony League World Series has reached out to different teams and about trying to use them as satellite sites. And in Washington County, they've actually lost it and had to go to Mount Lebanon because they couldn't find fields. They had to go to Mount Lebanon. They found turf fields out there that conducted it. Now, they're not necessarily excited about doing it out there, you know, because it's actually now like Elliott County, they're Little League, you know, and it dries up. But, you know, you've got to try to find fields where you are. So I've contacted them about bringing tournament play and maybe in Pony League World Series to have a satellite site, you know, right here, you know, by utilizing that PW1. Because that's, that and Reese Field are the only ones that are acceptable for their specifications of what they need to put on the Pony League World Series. So hopefully, like with this, it's a stepping stone to actually not only allowing us to play and continue play, but also to promote tourism into this area and to bring, you know, maybe Taipei, China, maybe playing on our field, you know, in a couple of years. So that'd be wonderful.
You reintroduced a question I've asked over the years, or made me think of it anyway. As far as the Pony League, is Peters a Pony League sanctioned group?
We are plenty. We go by Pony League rules. We, the same rules that drive our rec and our travel, we also follow through with that so that our teams can...
That is not the case with Little League, though. We're orphaned from Little League for whatever reason.
You mean the Little League?
Like the World Series.
Yeah, so like our, the Little League is not. That's all separate from Pony League. You're actually kind of either Little League or you're Pony League. You can't, I think, be sanctioned by both. At least, I don't know the team that is, that you can play by both.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank you, Natalie, for your hard work on that and look forward to that project getting underway.
Come back more often. Every time you come, you bring money, so please, come back more often.
All right, next item on the agenda is audience comments.
We have them now. We have them in approval minutes.
Oh, I did skip one. I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
So move second.
Okay, motion is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries seven, nothing. Now we'll go to audience comments, which is an opportunity for a member of the audience to speak on a non-agenda item for five minutes unless we need to extend it. Anybody in the audience wish to address council at this time?
My name is Tom Burke. I live at 119 Driftwood Drive in the Hidden Valley, or the Hidden Brooks...
I'll pass you down, please, doctor. I'm sorry, I was told there were seven of you.
No problem. There are seven of us. Okay, in the Hidden Brook section of, in Hidden Brook community, Peters Township. I'm accompanying Linda Phillips, who is also a resident of Hidden Brook. She lives on Angler's Drive. Linda's a single woman that lives alone, and about two years ago, she purchased a new home in Hidden Brook. And since that time, she's had numerous problems, significant problems because of defects in that home, and she'll explain those to you.
Thank you.
But the reason that we're before council is that we believe, or she believes, excuse me, that there was an improper inspection when the home was first built and before she sold it. And had that inspection not occurred, had it been a proper inspection, that she very well wouldn't have had to face the defects that she's facing now. So Linda wants to go. And I'm here because of a friend, and a friend and neighbor. That's the reason I'm accompanying her.
So I'm sure some of you might have heard my name. I don't know. I've been writing write-to-know forms for about two years now. I bought a new construction house less than two years ago, and I've had nothing but problems since I've moved in, to the point where we've had to rip the driveway out three times, and the slope is no bigger than coming through your, coming into here. It's been nothing but a nightmare. So what I have given you is a fire and safety inspection report that I had done from the fire department that shows that the builder didn't properly vent my dryer. And those are pictures of what my attic looks like now. If you turn to page eight of the report, you will see lint and insulation blown all through my attic. This second document I have...
I could interrupt Linda.
Sure.
The vent from the dryer was vented into the attic, not into the outside.
Right.
Yeah, I can see that in the photograph.
And that's lint that's hanging off the beams and insulation. The second document I have is an email that was given to me by the township in a Dropbox file from Peters Township. Most of my major problems are in the attic. There's no ventilation at all there. I have mold, the dryer vent, the insulation is seven years out of code. When I had a one-year home inspection, I need a new roof. They compromised all the shingles when they walked on the roof. So the reason that I'm here today is because, you know, I know the township has immunity, but I need help from you guys. Like, the lawsuit, they want $50,000 to go to court. And I'm just requesting like a second home inspection because obviously, there were multiple things that were missed by the first home inspector in the township. I mean, my house, I could have caught on fire in there with that dryer vent. I actually pulled out Christmas candles that were in a tub that, you know, the luminaries, the fake ones, and they were completely melted. It was so hot up there this summer. So that is my request, if I could have another inspection. Obviously, multiple things were missed in the first one.
So one of the things, and I apologize because I'm not completely familiar with your situation, I had a chance to talk with Ed Zook briefly.
He spent in my house.
Yeah. And one of the things that Ed had told me is that the contractor who built this house, Rowling Lambert, is prepared to come in and repair items that are not satisfactory. But my understanding is you're not interested in having them come into your home?
No, that's, what they have requested to fix is a downspout, a bent hose bib, a torn refrigerant line, things that are like three and four dollars, not a roof, not the ventilation in the attic, not the mold, little things like that. And that's, I've not, my, I just haven't responded to them yet because they're not addressing the major issues. I mean, a torn refrigerant line is a couple of dollars. You know, I have almost $100,000 in damages. I'm single and by myself, bought this house, and it's just been one, I mean, the shutters fell off. The back door was put on backwards. The water was coming into the house. Like, it has been nothing but a problem, and I don't, you know, I don't know what else to do, so...
Paul, who inspected this house for the township?
I'll be honest with you.
He doesn't work here anymore.
Was this during the period when we... I don't know who that...
He's not here anymore.
Is it on the...
He's on email.
I'm not, I didn't know at the time.
Joe's not a employee by the township.
It's less than two years old. For me, I moved in in March.
See, I think the building permit's 2020, isn't it?
I moved in in March, so...
So the unit was built within the last couple of years?
Yes.
And we issued the occupancy permit?
Yes.
Based upon our inspector's inspections?
Mm-hmm.
That's why I was hoping to come to you. I mean, I need, you know, I would love to have a second home inspection because, like I said, there's so many things that are wrong, and I'm up against the wall. I mean, the lawyer wants a $50,000 retainer for me to go to court.
Sorry, there is a reason we can't give her...
Well, we can go, we can go do an inspection, but what you need to realize is what we inspect for are code issues, and not everything in terms of constructability is a code issue. And that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be repaired. It does. But like, for instance, in a situation where there's a problem with a driveway, that's not a code issue, nor is it something we inspect. That's, we inspect for compliance to the, to the building code. And I just don't want to mislead anybody to think that we're going to go in and look at things that aren't related to the building code. Like, for instance, you're venting to the roof? That's a code issue, and that needs to be...
That's definitely a code issue. Isn't supposed to go out the closest point of exit? He wants to now put it through the roof, which would not be, I mean, listen, I don't know anything about...
And I don't know the answer to that. I'm not a code...
I sell medical devices, but I'm slowly becoming a contractor over the past two years. I'm learning. I've had my sewer backed up twice. Like, I've had major issues in that house.
So what is it that you want to do, if you would get the inspection? You looking to just have that report to take it to the builder and say, "Look, the township confirmed my problems"?
I need someone to put pressure on him to do the right thing and make this house. To me, I don't think it should have ever had an occupancy sticker the way it is. And I'm living in there. I mean, I have cracks in the foundation where I can stick a credit card in, and I read that if that's like that, then it's, it's not just, you know, settlement. Like, there's things wrong in there, and I just want him to make it right. Because if I were to sell that place the way it is, who's going, no one's going to buy that.
Yeah, and again, I think some of the items you're describing are constructability, where our inspector won't look for that and won't be able to weigh in.
But he'd be able to look at the insulation that's out of code, and even in that email that I had, it talks about how are you going to do venting? Most of my problems are in the attic. You know, there's mold up there, there's, so even when the fire department came, it was the middle of November, but it was a hot day, they were like, "Oh, my God, is it hot up here?" And I said, "There's nowhere for anything to go."
So no roof vent or anything?
Nothing.
But, but the answer to the question is yes. We can have the building inspector go out and take a look at it. He'll be taking a look at it based upon the code, not upon questions constructability, just so everybody understands it. But I have no problem having the building inspector go back up.
Is this builder still doing work in the township?
I would not be surprised that he is, but I don't know that for a fact. I don't know anybody who's building it.
They build in different locations.
I know he's building in Mount Lebanon. I don't know about anything here.
What's your builder's name?
Ryan Gillespie.
Yeah. But the company's name is Rowling Lambert.
So you have to understand, I'm going up against someone whose family owns Heartland and Ryan. So everyone that comes in to give me a quote, nobody wants to, they don't want to go against him. So it's been difficult to even get the correct info, you know?
Understood, ma'am. No attorney would ask you for a $50,000 retainer.
It's going to be $50,000 to go to litigation.
That I would agree with. No attorney should be asking you for a $50,000 retainer.
No, I'm saying...
You've got two lawyers here.
You've got two lawyers here. Neither...
I would never ask you something.
So far, I've paid my lawyer $8,000, but he said, "We have to go to mediation, and after that's litigation, it's going to cost you $50,000." Sorry if I misspoke. He said between $30,000 and $50,000 for litigation.
You're probably right for an effective construction case.
Yeah.
You have mediated it. Was it in the contract?
It's in the contract. It's also in the contract, line 286, that says builder to provide seller, yeah, builder to provide seller with one-year home warranty, and he can't produce it. So he never gave me a warranty. And when my lawyer asked for it, there wasn't one. So, and I've been fighting, I fought with him for a year, and I just couldn't do it anymore.
So do we need to take a vote on this, or we're all in agreement, and we'll get another inspection?
Thank you. I could cry. Like, this has been such a nightmare.
And ma'am, you know that the, I'm sure you'll have your own inspector as well, because since we may miss, not, because we only can do the code, can't speak to a lot of your issues that you want to take to court or take to your mediation.
I have an inspection, but like I said, I came today and they told me there was going to be seven of you, and I was like, "Oh, all right." And I only, I don't, I think I gave it to you. I only had one inspection report that I printed because it's so big. I didn't want to inundate you guys with too much stuff, and I knew I was going to run out of time.
We'll talk to you some...
Okay.
So that's an inspection report from a third-party inspector?
Yes.
But just to reiterate what Mr. Smith said, when the inspector, when our inspector comes out and does a second inspection, whatever report he may prepare is not going to help you if you go to litigation.
Right.
Because it doesn't, it's not going to address most of your...
And just be careful that somebody doesn't think that we're only identifying those issues and not the other ones. We're limited to what we can identify.
Right. No, I understand. I was just looking for some kind of help.
Yeah, I just didn't want anyone to use that issue as well, that's all.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Could you restate your name, please?
If you guys want to help, you both are lawyers, right? Both ranks, I looked you up, you're both lawyers. Anyone want to do a pro bono case?
Unfortunately, neither of us could take the case.
Yeah, you got conflict of interest, huh?
Unfortunately, if you lived in another township, I'd be glad to help you if I can here.
It's just, it's a nightmare.
I'm sorry.
Just so you know, Brian Gillespie has nothing to do with Heartland Homes or Ryan Homes.
His family does.
No, they don't. They're completely out. They've been out since 2012. So they have not, so don't let that be a threat to you for any reason.
But I mean, he's just, he's a piece of work, so...
Tell.
Yes. So thank you guys for listening, and I guess someone will be in touch with me about, I mean, I feel like I know Ed, I know Jeff, I feel like I know everyone's name because I've talked to all of them. Someone, I guess, will be in touch with me about an inspection.
Good luck, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other audience comments? Okay, I see none. So if you do want to do your business, we'll move into new business. The first item will be a acceptance of a grant that we spoke of.
So moved.
Second. Okay, the motion is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries seven, nothing. Next item will be a resolution authorizing the submission of Commonwealth Finance and Authority American Rescue Plan H2O grant, I guess, to cover some of the funding for the briar.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. Item three will be a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for Commonwealth...
So moved. Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It carries something different. Item D, an ordinance amending the code ordinances, section ordering speed limits of traffic signals, et cetera.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion is a second. Any further discussion? I guess for the sake of anybody watching, this is just regarding new streets establishing signage and speeding limits, so...
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. Item E, an ordinance amending the code ordinances, chapter 320, or 391. I'll let you take this over.
So, yes, Pennsylvania Act 57 of 2022 creates a new right for property taxpayers. If you fail to receive an initial notice when you move in, you now have the right to request a waiver of all late fees. And I'm not quite sure why the state chose to do this with this way, but they're requiring that every taxing jurisdiction, so the school district's already done this, and municipality adopt this by ordinance.
So moved. I'll second it, but I have a question. It says on this form that all you have to do is say you didn't receive the tax notice. What happens if, you know, you definitely know that it was mailed? I mean, that's, to me, doesn't seem right.
I would agree with you.
Because if you just bought a piece of property, you could just deep six the tax notices and keep the money for a year and...
Well, you owe the tax. What you're out of is the penalty and interest.
Yeah, but you could keep the money and let it work for you.
That doesn't make any sense.
No discretion built in. It's just, you get a free pass, for sure.
But we don't have any choice.
No.
Yeah, we have no choice.
It depends how long.
So you are second.
Given where it comes from, you should be surprised.
All right, any further discussion from anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. Next item will be an ordinance limiting tax on the assessed value of real property located the assessed value of real property located in the township for 2023.
So, as we have worked through the budget, it's our recommendation that the current tax levy of 1.7 mils be maintained for the upcoming years, so there's no increase in property tax.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seven, nothing. Next item will be an ordinance adopting the 2023 operating budget.
So, it's, council has been involved in the process of putting together the budget. We had the public hearing on the budget. Little has changed from that discussion. The, the budget anticipates revenues of $23,263,000 and expenditures of $27,564. That difference is, in large part, the monies from the American Rescue Plan, as well as we'll be spending down some of the, the bond money. Even with that occurring, there will be, if in fact the revenues come in and the expenditures are as they're projected, it would reduce our fund balance somewhat. But the reality is, we, we budget revenues very conservatively, and, and the same on the expenditure side. So, what I would anticipate is that by the end of the year, this will all balance, if not, if not have a slight surplus. So, it's my recommendation that council adopt an ordinance establishing the 2023 township operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
You put up only two graphs on the screen. We've all been presented with binders, including...
Yes.
The work product that went into making those two graphs.
And I, I give Ryan and Tom a lot of credit for their, that compilation of that budget. This is the Cliff's Notes version of that budget, and so...
Yes, I think we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. Next item will be an ordinance adopting the 2023 to 2027 capital improvement program.
And the one thing I want to point out about the capital budget is, the reason, one of the reasons why you're able to receive that ARC cap money is that Peters Township, unlike many communities, actually adopts a capital budget that has projects that are out there for five years. So, we got a call on short notice from, from Natalie saying, you know, "Do you have projects?" And because they're contained within here, and we have taken the time to earmark those inside the ARC cap program, when she asked that question, we were able to respond in a way that allowed you to get that money. All the credit belongs to her, because, quite frankly, that application process means nothing. It's, this, the ARC cap money is largely a political thing, so...
Move, we approve ordinance number 885, establishing the 2023-2027 Peters Township Capital Improvement Program.
Second.
Anybody have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. Next item will be a resolution amending job description in the handbook. So, basically, we're just changing the word secretary to administrative assistant.
Yes, because it more appropriately describes what these people do at this point.
Move that we approve the resolution amending the job descriptions contained in the Peters Township employee handbook.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. And final item of new business will be an ordinance establishing the 2023 Township Pay Plan governing full-time and part-time administrative employees.
And what's proposed is that the pay plan be increased by 2.75%, and that standard wage increases in 2023 be capped at that 2.75%.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 886, increasing the pay rates in the pay plan by 2.75%, and the range for standard wage increases in 2023 be capped at 2.75%.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second on the floor. Anybody have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Okay, six to one. Item six, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I knew they'd be approved, to submit it.
So moved.
Okay, motion in the second. Anybody have any questions or concerns about those? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries seven, nothing. I don't believe there's any correspondence.
Well, there is a piece of correspondence. It's at your desk, and it's from Mr. Donan. It's starting the naming of... He emailed it all to us.
Right. He's just requesting that we consider naming the town, the new road in the township after a resident of the township who, I believe, was killed in Vietnam, or some other road or establishment with township. So, it's definitely something worth considering.
And I think we need to have a discussion at some point and understand what the process is going to be, so...
And I think I got something from Juan Camaro. I don't know if everybody knows...
In support of what Mr. Donan said.
I thought her suggestion was a little bit better, because it's just not one person. It's, because otherwise, we're going to get inundated with that type of stuff, if we were to do that.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah, it came today.
She, she suggested, like, Veterans Way, or something like that.
Make it, like, all encompassing, as opposed to...
No, I think everything's on the table.
Right, yeah.
So, we move on to minutes. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss in board minutes?
I think so.
This is ladies, the chapter, the January 2023 calendar.
So, my first question to you is, the way the Home Rule Charter reads is that you are to have a reorganization meeting on the first Monday in January. The reason why I have proposed it on the ninth instead of the second, the second actually is the commemorated holiday here. So, I have no problem if we want to meet on the second, but it seems to me to make more sense for everyone's, to do that on the ninth.
2017, I think it was, the last time, the second wasn't Monday, and we had it that Monday, and everyone was grousing about it, so...
Does the statute say first Monday, do you have to?
I don't think that, I don't think that that's a real, a practical issue.
Well, someone brings, if we have it on the ninth, and somebody brings a lawsuit, that we should have had it on the second, I would deal with it. Ninth makes more sense, I think.
Is that, that, for everybody?
Yeah.
It's fine.
So, the other thing, we're going to be opening the bids on the 15th for the Aquatic Center, and we're in the process of putting together the information. Council has asked for consideration of that. I'm suggesting that on the 16th, that we have a workshop devoted to the Aquatic Center. The way the bids are structured, we have to award that no later than the first meeting in February. So, it seems to me that that would be timely. One of my questions for council was, do you want to have a public hearing and afford people to come in? I don't know that you're going to hear a lot of new things, but it's a major project in town, so...
When you say we have to let the contract by the beginning of February, is that, to get it done by a certain date, or is that a requirement of the grant?
No, that's a requirement of the bid document. You can't hold, you know, as it is, we've helped, we will have held these prices open for a fairly long time, and so you can't hold them open indefinitely. And so, the way the bid documents are structured, it's in that week of the, the 13th, when, when the bid has to be awarded. I think it's probably by the 15th or 14th, so...
So, when are, when are we opening the bids?
We're opening them on the 15th this month.
And so, will we know what that, that, those numbers are at the next meeting?
Yes.
Because I don't want to schedule, personally, I don't want to schedule workshop if the numbers are astronomical, because I doubt it's going to get approved. And why, why waste all that time and effort if, if it's $20 million and we decide not to?
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, for consideration to move the process forward?
Okay, we can do that.
But I also, I, I don't think we should have the workshop unless we have operating costs.
Well, no, that's going to be all part of that.
It's all going to be in the bid.
That's all going to be part of that discussion.
Well, if we're going to have a workshop, we end up having a workshop, I think we have to have a public hearing. Because I think the residents have to have a opportunity to come in. The last public hearing we had on the Aquatic Center was, what, 27, 2017, 18, 19?
No, it's 19, probably, yeah.
So, it's four years ago, and pre-COVID. So, I think the public should have the right to come in and express their feelings about it.
Okay, so you're going to put on the agenda, then, the bids. Are you going to be able to put, have those operating costs for the next meeting?
I won't have those at the next meeting. They're, Ballard King's in the process of processing these, those right now. Sports Facility Management, the management company that we looked at, is also in the process of doing that, and they'll probably most likely have those at the beginning of January.
What's the requirement for public notice on a public hearing? Do they have like 30 days, or?
No, it's a matter of advertisement the week before, so that, that's not really going to be an issue. The other thing is, it's never a problem to put an ad in that there's going to be a hearing, and that hearing doesn't occur. You can always cancel it, so that, that shouldn't be.
And we'll have to ask the school district, obviously. We can't have it here.
Yeah, we cannot have that, that meeting here.
The workshop could be held after one of the meetings?
No.
No, it would have to be by itself.
This is way too complicated to do it after a meeting.
16, 15?
Well, no, it is a holiday, but I don't think that's a holiday.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King, yeah.
16, 15.
No, it's not a problem.
Okay. I mean, I'll be, I'm pretty sure I'm going to be out of time, I think, if everybody else is available and it works. But, where does it come, I guess, the next meeting?
Yes. But also, and it's really the next item there, this is relative unique situation. We, we've had openings, and we've had lots of applicants before, but what we not have had for a long time is openings in five different boards. And so, I guess the question is how you would like to proceed, and if I could offer one suggestion, that would be if we can to get the two candidates in for the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority at 7:00 before next, next Monday's meeting, so that we would be in a position to make those appointments at the reorganization meeting, because of all of those, I think that...
How many openings? Just one.
What's that?
There's just one.
Yes.
Opening, so we just interview those two.
Two. That would allow us at the reorganization meeting, at least, to make those appointments. But I don't know how you want to go about the remainder. I don't think it's, and this number's gone up. This, it's no longer 19, it's 21, or something like that, no?
Well, I think as a group, we ought to go through these resumes and whittle it down. I don't think we ever in the past interviewed more than three people.
Three people for any position is what we have done in the past. And they're all 11111. Is there any that have two openings? No. Oh, wait, I think they're back. Youth commission.
How many applicants do we have for that?
Three.
And I think there's two openings. And you interviewed the one individual previously. Was that, was it Gina?
Yes.
I remember her.
So, you know, what, what I suggest is, if we don't do anything else, and if we're actually having those, those workshop and that public hearing, that we devote in the evening to just doing interviews, as well as doing them before the upcoming council meetings.
All right.
That works.
It's in February.
And I guess, my last question with regard to the calendar. The planning commission requested that we look at changes to the zoning ordinance for the overlay zones, and council wanted us to look as well. We have prepared recommendations for the planning commission and council to consider. Our thought was that it made more sense to have a joint workshop with the planning commission to do that. But the other way that that can be handled is, as we have done with other minor changes, is to run it through the planning commission and bring that recommendation to council. But that's up to you, how you want to do that. But otherwise, at some point, we're going to have to have a joint workshop with the planning commission.
I prefer to have a joint meeting.
And I think you're probably going to have to have a public hearing on that issue, too, probably in March. Particularly, if we're looking at eliminating the overlay.
Well, yes. But I don't think that's what we're going to propose to you, but we're going to propose changes.
I got the impression it was going to be harder.
But I think you need a public hearing anyhow. So, do you want to, do you want a tenable be scheduled for then, or do you want to point it off into March?
Yeah, let's, let's get it over with before the weather gets warm.
Yeah.
It's going to be a busy few, first few months of the year, apparently.
Can you, can you email, email this calendar out to us?
Yes.
We didn't get anything.
What's that?
We didn't get anything that we could...
It's, you know what, then, Tom, I will ship you this out. Tom was to include that.
So, is next Monday 7:00 we're doing the...
That's what we're going to shoot for, 7:00, and I'll let you know that for sure.
Next Mon, next Monday?
Here is another miscellaneous item. The chamber has invited council to come to a ribbon cutting for the 1781 clock this Friday at 4:55, so...
4:55, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's on, there's, it's on your desk.
It's to match the sunset.
Oh, okay. That's what it is.
All right.
Paul, you have the floor, you know, if you'd like to...
It's somewhat with regret, but I wanted to pass on the fact that former councilman, Dave Ball, lost his wife last week. Condolences to his family, and we have not heard any details associated with arrangements or anything. And in conjunction with looking for that information, I, I came across a friend of mine, Jim Parati, who is a councilman here in Peters. He served from '72 to '82. He was an engineer at Washington Steel. He was an executive with Washington Steel. Lived in the community up until his passing, just this past November. He was a good friend. He was one of the original council persons when Peters went to the Home Rule, and it's confusing up there, because it says on his plaque, '78 to '82. But I thought I'd share that information with you.
You know, the other individual that has passed from the community who had a presence is Art Switzer.
Oh, yeah, I know.
You know, and Art served on our traffic impact fee committee for a number of years, and he certainly was an icon within the, the residential development community in, in town when he was active, so...
Does anybody have anything that they would like to include on the next agenda, which is next Monday? That being the case, adjourned.